To call this meeting to order. Your call please.
Number.
Here.
Yes.
Neville.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Bert, my turn.
Here.
Here.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of guests, we have Mr. Poffe Maguire, Josh, who's saying what you want to say, and Ms. Laura Ho. Laura, is there something you wanted to say or do you want to talk under Business District appropriation?
Under Business District appropriation.
Approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes and claims and accounts.
A E B Energy, one thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars, forty-one cents. Ameren, two thousand fifty-two dollars, eighty-seven cents. Casey's General Store, one thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars, seventy-seven cents. Dunn Company, eight hundred eight dollars, sixty cents. Farmers Bank, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars, twenty-eight cents. I L Power Equipment, one thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars, ninety-six cents. I and B, two hundred and one thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars, sixty-six cents. I and B Visa, one thousand two hundred fifteen dollars, seventy-seven cents. D D C Area Disposal, one thousand two hundred forty-four dollars, seventy-five cents.
Is there any questions on the claims and accounts? If there is no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion smog.
A second.
Second, Neville. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there any public comments on the agenda items? Officer reports, please.
Um, I just got one thing. I've had a complaint, a couple complaints about some illegal burning. So, I'm just trying to remind everybody, only supposed to be burning yard waste stuff and nothing else. I guess where somebody might mown carpet and, and wood and stuff like that, so. I guess the, uh, fire department had to go out and put a few fires out the other night, so, yeah. That's all I have.
Can you, as much as you can, maybe elaborate a little bit on, on the lockdown situation that happened at the grade, at the schools the other day?
Yeah. Um, I wasn't home that day. I was sick. But, uh, I heard on the radio, I also got a call, that there was a pursuit coming through one twenty, or down one twenty-one. And, uh, so what we did is we, uh, I called the grade school, high school, design. I told them to put on, you'll go on a lockout. You know, they can still resume as normal in this, in this school. Just don't let anybody inside and don't let anybody outside. So, the kids that go from designing to the grade school, sometimes doing banned stuff. Well, at that time, there was time for them to leave. Well, they couldn't leave. They had to leave and they had to stay there until it was lifted. I know the county and Lincoln P D were in pursuit. And I believe they ended up handing them just, near just a caterer. So, once I got the okay that they were out of our area, I called them back and just to let them know, you know, how you can go back to normal. You know, going back to the normal school.
Is that kind of standard operating procedure if there's a pursuit that might be in town that can go into a lockout procedure?
Yes. It's just because, we don't know if they're gonna continue on one twenty-one or if they're gonna come into town.
Right.
And I'd rather just, you know, that's kind of what we do. They do all throughout the whole county. You know, if they know they're heading up towards another direction, they'll notify those schools, you know, let's, let's lock out. So that, um, you know, in case they do. Because I mean, if, if they didn't go through one twenty-one, they came in and plaskey. You know, now we go to situation, I'd rather keep them out and, so. But yes, there's a procedure.
Any questions on that or any questions for Tony?
I don't know if you're with this at all or not, but I got the all-clear message, but I never got a message saying.
Yeah, I think that's from the school design things, I believe. The school sends out an alert now, get texts and email and I think we got one after it was lifted, not before. But I think they don't announce that as kind of a precaution. They don't cause like chaos, all parents want to show up at the school.
Alright.
Here.
Anything else for police? Public Works?
Uh, several things. Um, first off, this Thursday, we were having a street alley committee meeting with Farnsworth Engineering to hopefully make some progress on our M F T program for the year. Um, Josh and I and Tim was here and sat through, we had a little training session with some folks from I dot to give us some, in my opinion, very beneficial knowledge to how to prepare our own M F T statements in the future. Uh, the more we talked about it, it's probably a lot to absorb for, for us to try to tackle this year. But, uh, hopefully with what we've gained in the, in the knowledge and the context we have, next year we'll be able to prepare our own and, uh, hopefully not have to use an engineering firm, save ourselves some dollars in that department. Uh, several other things I have is if you've seen on the claims and accounts sheet, we had finished cleaning up the building refuse at Sewer Pond and I contacted several individuals to see about getting a bid to put a new building there, that's in process. And let's see here, I also was contacted by the fire department. Their curious is, they don't really have a good spot in town to do any training for, for, uh, like tear apart vehicles and a rollover or something to be able to cut the roof of the car off and dismantle the car to get a person out. And they asked if we had a problem with them doing that training out there. I personally don't have a problem with this. It's our fire department. I told them, I said, I would like to at least be afforded to talk to the council and the mayor about it. But I, I just, I don't foresee a problem. I mean, anytime it has to do with training, I think it's, and it's out of the way, so they're not, somewhere here in town, I think it just makes better sense.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that. Are you okay with that? Any, any red flags there?
The other thing I had, I, I got an email actually Sunday evening from Justin about our C N project. C N, they had contacted C N, they had asked for several more revisions. Let them seem like it was really major, so that is in the process of being addressed through Farnsworth. Um, that's pretty much what I have for the evening.
Anything else for Public Works?
Glad to know we got the M F T on, ball rolling on that. The sooner we get that in, the sooner we can get that work done, so. Seems like it always takes forever to get it, to get it back to us and approved, so.
That's another thing, uh, upon that subject, during our training session, it depends on how we set it up. But we, I think in the past, we've been running from basically physical year. So that would be running June one to June, or May thirty-first to June one, or May thirty to June one. And I dot doesn't really care how we set that up. I think we have to, next year focus harder on setting it up so it's ready by January one. So we utilize the entire year to do that program. And listen, I'm missing something. That sounds like a pretty easy thing to do, at least from, from their standpoint with us.
They said the best time to start setting it up is about in October. By the first of the year, you'll have everything finalized and turned in.
Right. I know the county wants that, wants it by March fifteenth, we're gonna use the air equipment.
Yeah, so I mean, the earlier the better. It's, it's to our advantage. So that's what our intentions are come fall. Once we're pretty well done with this year's projects or things that we're gonna do this year, we're gonna immediately switch gears and put together next year's program. So come January one, everything will be ready to roll.
Good. Anything else for Public Works? Treasurers' report?
Um, deposits for the last two weeks, twenty-three thousand, two oh two ninety. And that includes, does include the business, business district tax and motor bill tax. Um, if you're wondering what the last item is, it was deposited today. Um, it is reimbursement for the work that was down, done at the house on four fifteen West Cook. The yard work and cleaning up of that, that house has been sold. So, um, those payments for those fees that the city incurred to get it cleaned up will reimburse the city.
Does that come from the title company?
Yes, it did.
I forgot to mention that to you today. That's all square away. Could you?
Anything else Patricia? Moving on to old business, proposed ordinance change, which we, uh, which I passed out last week, or last meeting. Um, has everybody had a chance to look through this? If not, um, we don't necessarily have to take action on it tonight. Tim sent me an email that had several good points. I didn't really per se forward that email on to the rest of them. Tim, do you want to kind of explain what you thought needed to be done with it or? Um, I guess you just want to go through the bullet points?
Sure, I mean, I got the email up. I'll just, yeah, go ahead and I'll kind of.
Yeah, I overlook any. Uh, the ordinance as proposed, the first thing is it repeals the, uh, the language or the verbiage regarding the superintendent of streets and the superintendent of water and sewer. Um, there's been some discussion that that should be retained. Uh, my position is, is that it's kind of redundant in the big picture. And to me, those positions would be more meaningful if we had a larger operation in which we would have people in that position. Since we're smaller, we're kind of doing jack of all trades. So, uh, that's why I feel that they're redundant. And in my mind, if we get to that stage, we could simply, uh, rewrite the ordinance and put them back in, just as we're considering tonight. Um, the second bullet point concerns, uh, subsection J of, uh, section H, or excuse me, of, uh, seven, one seventeen dash two duties. And section J discusses the, uh, the director of public works should have the sole responsibility and authority to hire and discharge any member of the public works. Um, and then it goes on to say about informing the mayor. Uh, my proposal included getting rid of the second sentence and simply adding on that the director should have the responsibility to hire and discharge and then simply with the consent of the mayor and the city council. In that way, the public works director does not have the sole exclusive authority that without the, uh, consent of the mayor and the, and the city council. And that, it kind of reduces the chance or the opportunity to do as they please with no recourse and such. So that, it just adds additional hoop in that regard. The next one was, uh, salary. Uh, the proposed ordinance discusses being a salary position. Um, currently, the position is hourly. And from my understanding of the operations, uh, that is best served as an hourly position currently. So, it just works out better from an accounting standpoint also. And last, I believe, is absence, which is in section one dash seventeen dash four. That in the event of a vacancy of the public works director, instead of the city council has the authority to appoint interim employee. Um, I've rewritten it to say the mayor, with the consent of the city council, has the appointment. In my mind, the mayor is who the public works director reports to and would be in the best position to figure out who would be the best person to serve in that role on an interim basis. I believe off the top of my head, that's all of them.
Yes.
Again, just my two cents.
Uh, to go through Tim's, uh, tentative changes that he would like to add. I'm, I'm okay with repealing the one twelve one and one twelve two, one thirteen one, one thirteen two. I agree with him when it comes to being redundant as far as having those positions of streets alley supervisor, water sewer supervisor when, uh, they're not really needed at, at, at this time, the way we're trying to restructure the. And then, um, really, the, the only other thing that stands out to me with Tim's, um, suggestions is that the director shall no longer have the responsibility and authority to hire and discharge any member of the, of the Department of Public Works. I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with it. I don't know, I'm kind of up in the air about that. What's everybody's opinion on that? That was more, that was, I, I believe that was a suggestion made by our former public works director and maybe even a, you know, a requirement that, that it be in there because he wanted to have the power of hiring and firing. Um, obviously, it's up for discussion. But I, it's always worked good now for the public works director to have that power. But it doesn't mean that we can't, can't, uh, discuss changing it, so. But you're, you know, what's everybody think about that? That's a pretty big change because it's been that way for several years.
I'm equally torn. I consider that, I don't have a solid opinion either.
Just, uh, temperature, how do you feel about that?
Pardon?
How do you, do you feel it's okay to have that responsibility?
Well, to me, the language doesn't need to change because I know how I'm gonna treat it, but I, I can't look at that solely. I've got to look at a generation past me. Because, I mean, in my endeavors of, of hiring and, sort of discharging an employee, but hiring an employee, it's always been the conglomeration of the council and the mayor anyhow. So to me, it's, it's not much of a difference. I mean, I know you've sat through it, Mr. Mayor, I know that for a fact, so. And it was always a conglomerate effort between the, even though I may have had the final say so, we were all taking the opinions and throwing them in and discussing them, so.
Kind of in the agreement that going forward, we don't know what's gonna happen down the road. We get somebody else when you're gone who just doesn't like the other person working with them. I think it's better to have some kind of checks and balances so that.
Well, yeah, because I mean.
Very good point.
Yeah, you know.
If you all of a sudden you get mad at Josh and you just want to get rid of him, it's up to you. Well, hopefully, well, we would like to think we can all be adults in that kind of a situation.
Hiring and firing is so relative and subjective. To me, having this additional hoop and hurdle is beneficial, yes.
And I think it's better to have it spelled out in the ordinance. That one takes advantage of.
Because we know how the president works.
He feels about it.
Yes. The next guy, who knows?
Right.
I guess, uh, the thing that makes the, would make sense to me was that, you know, I would, if it came right down to it, I would have the final say. And the reason I say that is because it's gonna be an employee working for me. Okay? But I do like the idea of having the input of the six and the mayor because that just throws everybody's opinion. Maybe there's something out there I'm not seeing or vice versa, you know what I mean?
No, but you'll have the most influence because you'll build the case for whatever your recommendation is. And in my mind, if it's justifiable, it's a no-brainer.
It just gets this kind of security check from both sides, telling nobody wrongfully terminated.
The lawsuits.
Or hired that we don't really want hired.
Okay, we will, we will reword that then as well. Uh, one seventeen three salary, um, I just kind of, with what Tim said, I, I am fully agree that that needs to be changed so we can follow within our own code. Um, in the deputy director portion, it was, um, there. It would just be relabeled to compensation and it would simply read the public's work director shall be compensated as an hourly employee. What is currently in one seventeen three will be struck. Does everybody feel okay with that? And then as far as the, um, the absence, that would be, that would be simple to add. It would just be the mayor has the authority to appoint interim employees with the advice, with the advising instead of the city council. That should be easier to reword. By the way, with Kelly not meaning, we'll maybe write all this down in all these scribbles and scratches. I'm gonna, we're gonna rewrite it all before we vote on it. I think that's the best moving forward. Does everybody agree with that? We're not in any hurry to get this done anyways. We want to make sure it's right. Those were all good, good points, Tim. Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Okay, I'll make note of those changes and rewrite it. And, uh, let's hope to, uh, let's hope to make a final decision at the next meeting. Could you please put that on the agenda of their miscellaneous business? Yeah, we're pretty close to getting this done, so. Uh, new business, 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 business district appropriation. Laura would like to say a couple words if she would please, if you would please. Tom told me that you were gonna be here speaking on his behalf.
Yes.
Yes.
Before I get to that though, uh, last minute business district funds appropriation request for the city council's approval. Uh, three thousand two hundred fifty dollars for rent of our office space and this covers March to December twenty twenty. So, uh, that's the first item for you to discuss. We're currently in the, we've been in the courthouse foundation office and, uh, my dad, Rick, approached the board asking if we'd be willing to pay rent because we've been there without rent for a while now. And we're gonna share the space with the courthouse foundation, um, as we have been. So we're gonna split the cost of the rent and, um, the amount would be three hundred twenty-five dollars a month, which isn't bad for the town. Any other questions or thoughts on that?
Is, uh, normally when we have this, like an appropriation from the business district, there is a recommendation from the business?
Forgive me if I didn't word it correctly.
I, I mean, we have appropriations, usually they vote upon it and they say, yeah, we think these are good things to do. Is this in that category?
Yes.
What fund is it coming out of?
Uh, we were asking for the business district versus the community funds.
And what's the justification why meetings have to be held over there and not here at city hall for a cost of zero?
Uh, it's where they have been and, um, the setup there is more like a conference room. You can sit there and talk with many different committees. And if we had it here, it's a bit more formal. But you're right, it is rent free. It's just that the board at the time felt that it's more of an appropriate space for the things they're trying to get done here in town. A place to meet and it gives the courthouse some more traffic through so people can see that there are a lot of things going on in town versus city hall. Um, it's kind of hard to see what's going on whenever you guys, um, have your meetings, but not everyone comes to them.
That's just in life.
That's true, which is great. Uh, sorry, to back track a bit, uh, they just feel that they want to be there at least from March into December and they'll look into the possibility of coming here or using other office space, if need be. But they've been there for, what, two years now without rent? So they feel that spending the remainder of this year paying rent would kind of offset having rent-free space for the previous two years. Uh, it's a good point.
It's a tough sell for me, you know. You want to pay them three years after the fact, it's kind of hard too, you know, so.
And, and no one's asking to be paid three years after the fact, which is a good.
Well, they just said that's part of their argument.
Well, I, I think it's also kind of a sense of place, you know? Just, oh, we've been there, it feels right, but that doesn't mean you can't move elsewhere. That's rent free.
It's coming out of the tax fund too, so.
If, if, if everybody's, if, if the council thinks already to move forward with this approval, I would, I would put some caution out there to maybe, let's look at our redevelopment plan and make sure this fits within the goals of our plan. I'm not entirely sure off the top of my head I can find one where it does to rent space for a development board. I, I don't know where that would fall under to, for our plan. I'm sure, I'm sure you could make it fit somewhere.
Would that have any included administrative costs?
Yes, it could be.
Were you happen to be at that meeting?
I was not at the meeting on a Saturday, no, I was unable to make. I, I would just suggest before we can, before we can absolutely make sure that it's something that goes in accordance with our development and redevelopment plan, that we table it until the next meeting, which would still be in March, which would still be, you know, two weeks. That shouldn't, shouldn't be that big of an issue, should it?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Not gonna get evicted.
I don't think so.
Your meeting, your meeting's open to the public.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just remembering.
Oh, yeah, they have stairs, but you'll probably have to have access to it, but you don't want to climb stairs. You don't want the public having to climb the stairs. I was just saying, we have a big space upstairs.
Yes, I know. Should probably make it up to, oh yeah, you guys were up to our last meeting, I'm sure.
I would say we put, um, people in place to help guide us with these, these decisions. And we charged them with making recognition, they want to spend the money alone. I still have that trust. If we have input and to guide them, you know, we can, we can make that, but.
Well, I think what you're saying is it'd be nice to have these, uh, suggestions, recommendations ahead of time so we can think about them instead of just.
Yeah, and that's fine. You, you said it was last minute before she.
Oh, but still, well, when we meet.
It was on Saturday, but I was late to that meeting, so I didn't.
So there was a few dates, so.
Yeah.
You know, even a simple email would be better, you know, so.
Okay, well, it's, it's okay with everybody. We'll sit on that.
Make a motion to table the business district appropriation.
That'd be fine. Motion to table. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion table. Opposed? Motion tabled. Anne, you were going, also gonna speak about something else?
Yes, um, I have some updates as well. Do you want me to wait on that or present?
I would go ahead and do the updates first. That's fine.
Okay. Uh, we had our first daycare steering committee after our regular meeting on Saturday. There were about a dozen people there. We had a great discussion on how to move forward. Uh, we were left with some assignments on researching daycare models out there now that are working and what might be applied to here in town to serve our community. And, uh, we have some people who have contacts throughout, um, central Illinois that are working within daycare facilities now. So they'll come back at our next meeting, April fourth at ten thirty a.m. to kinda develop the game plan on maybe a timeline on when we could do this for the community, uh, what's likely to work within our community and meet as many of the needs of the families here as we can. So that was a good meeting. Um, update for the time, town square revitalization project. We hope to meet later on this month to discuss the SEDS application. And we plan on presenting at the courthouse foundation's grand gala on April eighteenth. So the event is to benefit the town square revitalization project. Uh, we expect to hear back from our SEDS application at the end of March. And if we are finalists, we would present to the panel in late April. A shopping center update from Doug, uh, Johnson. He has made a verbal offer to Doug and Patty Johnson with some contingencies which they have agreed to. At this point, the biggest hangup is whether or not, uh, IDOT will approve the driveway slash entrance from Route one twenty-one. We are pretty much at the mercy of the state at this point. Justin from Farnsworth Group has been following up with them on a weekly basis. The proposal is still under review. Most of the other issues such as the roof repair and asbestos floor tile are close to being resolved. And hopefully everything will fall into place soon. That's good news from Doug. The last item I have is a letter to present to the city council on behalf of economic development planning board. And it reads, we are city council members, the Mount Plasky Economic Development Planning Board writes to you today, encouraging the members of Mount Plasky City Council to support and fund the Logan County Economic Development Partnership. Bill Thomas has been instrumental in every project. The EDPB has been involved in these past few years, including guiding us through the early development of this very board. The guidance and expertise Bill has given not only our board, but many others in our community have been invaluable. The number of hours he has provided to us totals in the hundreds and he has never once failed to respond to a question or to show up to a meeting. Our community would not be where we are in regards to our economic development successes and our potential successes if not for Bill's hard work on our tax. Sincerely, the Economic Development Planning Board. Signed, Tom Martin, Darren Powell, Jim Burge, Hillary Cherry, Aaron Wees, and Andrew Meister.
Make sure you get a copy for everybody to read over this. I was gonna reach out to Bill. Usually it's about this time of the year where he asks for his donation. So it's, uh, you know, something that needs to be discussed. What's, anybody have any first thoughts on, on Laura's letter?
Made my position clear last year, so.
I think it's a service. I would, I would be willing to, uh, to make work. Again, in, in two years, if we lose that, we're gonna wish that we'd supported what we could.
There's plenty of people over there to volunteer. You can volunteer just like everybody else.
On a personal note, Howie's helped me out is as I've asked any of you for help, if I'm stuck in my community efforts, I can always go to him for help, just as I've asked any of you for help. And he's immediately there with a response or a recommendation on what to do next. So I, he's been very helpful in my almost year of working on these projects. And I, I don't know where I would be without some of his guidance at times. So I really, I can't picture what it would have been like without someone there to guide either me or someone else I've been working with. He's been really great.
Usually it's thirty, four hundred dollars, two dollars per resident.
Okay, let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting as well, under miscellaneous business, economic development. Logan County Economic Development Partnership. In the meantime, feel free to reach out to Bill or reach out to Tom or Laura or anyone from the development board to, uh, hopefully resolve this matter with, uh, with the way we best see fit. Anything else from economic development? Water and sewer rates and surcharge. That was just put on there. Uh, Andrew spoke with me earlier in the week. Uh, you guys haven't had your water and sewer meeting yet this month, so there's really, uh, no proposal to suggest.
Nothing was referred to the water sewer committee, so there's nothing to discuss.
Right, well, that's it. I thought that, uh, we'll now let it be known that, uh, if we are going to discuss water and sewer rates increases, that, uh, if the committee could come up with a proposal.
I don't think it needs to be, um, reviewed.
You just wanna put on, you just wanna, am I right that you wanna keep the surcharge on there?
I wanna keep the surcharge on there. I do not think, uh, reviewing the rates is gonna gain us anything other than a bunch of grief from the public. Uh, you know, we've got projects upcoming, so to me, we're gonna end up, it's a lot of trouble to end up at the same place. So, that's where I stand on that particular issue.
When will the surcharge be removed?
Well, that's, it has to be removed now. It has to be removed.
We need to put it back, in my opinion.
Unless we change it, you know?
In my opinion, we need to put it back on so the bills go out, as Paul's gonna do next week, so nothing changes. Otherwise, if we put it back on in six months, we're gonna have to explain to the residents what all the background is. So, to me, why are we messing up something when there's really no other reason to just look at it and end up back at the same place? At the same end result, so.
I agree with you. So, may- maybe what I would charge the water and sewer committee to do, since it has to be removed because of the sewer surcharge, because of the loans paid off, if it's paid, if we just paid it off in full, it has to be removed by a resolution of the previous.
That's what we did last.
Right, right. So if, so we need to get a new resolution that says we will add this surcharge to the sewer portion of the water bill for terms of, um, capital projects.
Well, why can't we do that tonight?
I don't really see a, a, a resolution in front of us. Uh, maybe I should.
Well, it's no different than any other resolution, is it?
I would like to have it, I would, if we're gonna raise the sewer rates, I would like to have some sort of writing of a resolution.
But we're not raising the sewer rates.
Yes, we are.
Whether Bill's going out or not, you're raising it.
We removed four dollar, a four dollar charge. We're putting a four dollar charge back on there. What's the, what's the raise?
You removed the four dollar charge and we're re, and we're raising it. We, we decreased the bill and now we're increasing the bill.
For a net result of what?
Zero. Still doesn't mean we're not decreasing and increasing it. I mean.
Are you saying it's better to, to do this and just let the public like not know better? I mean, I feel like.
It's in the minutes of the, of the council. So what's deceitful about that?
And last meeting you were questioning, um, the tax that they wanted to put on for twenty years to pay for the courthouse.
That's completely different.
I'm just saying like, for the twenty years is up, how would we feel if they said, oh, we're gonna keep this on for another ten years? Like, that's the, that's what we're doing right now.
It's public record. We talked about it in an open session. I don't know. This isn't a secret.
I'm, I don't think we're being secretive, but it's, we made the promise that we were gonna remove the rate. And now we're like, oh, well, we did, but we're putting on the same exact thing again. I, I don't know. I don't, that's really right.
And is it be a written resolution? That way everybody knows what's going on.
So if we do write a new resolution, when will this new surcharge be removed?
We have to look at upcoming risks we have to do.
What are you talking about? A surcharge being removed? It was removed in the last meeting.
Yes, you wanna put on a new one, correct?
I just wanna renew it. I don't know what you call it.
I don't know what to win. I don't know when.
I, you leave it open ended with no sunset.
Is it just?
So you're raising water rates, period, via the surcharge?
Why not just tack it onto the minimum bill then?
Yeah, I think you gotta tie it to something.
Well, just call it a water surcharge or water sewer surcharge. What am I overlooking there?
Like normally a surcharge has to be justified.
Justified, yes.
If I got a surcharge on my home bill, they said, oh, it's just part of the bill.
Correct, they say.
That is what they say.
Yeah, they make you feel like crap right now.
But we can justify it because of what we have going on.
If we can justify it, then we can raise the water rates.
Well.
Would we rather, so we, we leave the surcharge, like make it new one for the same amount? We could take the existing base rate that's twelve dollars and we could raise that to sixteen dollars and then just go up into the rates and there's no dollar change. Or we could even it out and make the rates go up two dollars for the base and fifty cents per thousand gallons. That way it's like evenly spread. If you use a lot more, you pay more. It makes, I don't know. That seems like the natural way of doing it. And I agree there'd be some questions about why the rates are changing, but it's not that big a deal. So last time when we changed the rates, we projected how much we were gonna bring in income and I checked and we were within like a couple hundred dollars. So we can, based on what we changed it to, we can accurately say this is how much we're gonna bring in. That's easy. And as far as changing the computer for Paula, that's also pretty easy. There's one screen that sets the rates for water and sewer and you can remove the surcharge instead. Like, it's not a huge deal. But you've heard a lot from us too. What do you guys think?
It's gonna make a difference too because the sewer surcharge was only on people, it was only on customers that was, that were receiving sewer service. Roughly two hundred and some people out of the eight hundred and fifty-four do not receive sewer service. Is this correct?
Roughly eighty people out of, uh, probably ten percent.
Ten percent. So it would be different if you raised the rates?
No, cause it, uh, the sewer surcharge went to people who had sewer service, who were getting a sewer bill, so it still changed their income in that effect would not be changed.
But if you didn't have sewer service, you weren't paying the surcharge.
Correct.
So you're saying we're just adding this onto the base sewer?
Onto the base sewer.
Yeah.
Not the sewer water.
Yeah, we do not change the water rate. I, I, so this adds water and sewer rates. I, I don't know that we change the water rates now unless we wanna do like a proactive two percent increase or one percent and we just start doing that every year. So it's, we're ahead of the game rather than waiting till we're behind, so. I welcome.
To me, we put the surcharge on there for one specific reason. That was to pay off the loan. That was why we did it. That portion, you know, we figured out that that, that was the money we needed to make the monthly payment on the loan. If we add a surcharge as opposed to doing the base rates that we, as we have discussed, there's, probably should be a reason exactly what that's going towards. And if we say capital improvements, well then, to me, you would have to, you'd have to change the way you do your accounting to make sure that we have a capital improvement fund for the sewer. Because if you, if you say capital improvements and you don't, you don't account for it correctly on the, on the books, that will give you the opportunity to take some of the capital improvement money and it would just kinda float into wage increases. I mean, you would have no way of tracking it to make sure it was going towards capital improvements.
Something else you, you.
Go ahead, Tim.
No.
Okay, well, yeah. You get to speak first. Matt's get to speak second, so. That's just my opinion on that. Try, does that?
I mean, that would make sense. I mean, you wanna show that that surcharge is going to a particular thing. If it's a capital improvement, there should be a line item that separates that out so that you know that this money here is for capital improvements. And then when you do a capital improvement, then obviously it would come back out of that line item. So if anybody ever asks, you say, this is the money that went into the pot, this is the money that came out of the pot and what it was used for. So you could show that those funds were properly used and not just used for everyday expenses, that they were used for a particular capital improvement.
Water and sewer expenses are always segregated, so I understand your concern. But to me, the simplest way forward is just to put the surcharge back on there.
For the reason of capital improvement.
For the reason of capital improvement.
Infrastructure improvements, yes.
Yeah, I think it's easily, easily defended because nobody here can show dollar X went to project Y.
Not necessarily, but we could for the surcharge because it was all going towards the loan.
All you gotta prove is that you spent as much as you came in for the surcharge to project X.
Very true. You're right. We didn't, we didn't, you're right. You're right. I see what you're saying.
The little blurb that I wanna, wanted to bring to your attention is, just strictly my opinion, I don't have a vote, obviously, but, um, we should really revisit our, our rates on a frequent basis because if you notice other communities around here that have done large scale projects and, and sought grants and won grants, a lot of their approval process on the grant process is showing that you're willing basically to help yourself. So in other words, if you're small incrementing your, your, your rates and certain schedule, they shine a little higher light on you when it comes to giving grant money. Rather than you've been sitting at this rate schedule for the last ten years, well, they're not gonna wanna grant you a grant so easily because you're not really doing anything to help yourself. You follow what I'm saying? Now, I'm not saying we gotta run out there every other year and raise the rates, but I think we ought to at least spend the time to take a little look at it and see, are we in line?
We're in the black every year for the last, uh, seven years here, so, you know.
Really no reason.
For FY nineteen, we're two hundred and fifty-six thousand in the blacks, so I'm kinda confused. Why do we need to revisit this? You know, the only reason that, that ordinance or surcharge came on there is because nobody looked at it and nobody wanted to change anything. And when they went to the bank and then they looked at the financials, you guys can't pay the damn thing, so. But here we're a lot more, a lot more vigilant in keeping track of this stuff, so, uh, you know, that's my position on that, so.
So if we're in the black every year, do we need the surcharge any further?
That's gonna be another question that we're gonna have to answer.
Well, the dependence, how many projects does the public works director have in mind?
If that's the case and that comes up again, then we can put the surcharge on for when we need it.
Okay.
I don't see rat-holing that much money if we don't need to. This is one of those deals. One, one something goes on, it's really hard to get it back off. For this reason right here, it's really easy to.
Well, he itemized at least a hundred fifty thousand in projects coming up this year to be paid, so, and we're talking about, you know, thirty thousand dollars probably, so.
So this is a four dollar surcharge instrumental in meeting those costs?
To me, I think it is. Cause there's large, lots more, lots more projects down the road that we have to face. How old's the water, the sewer facilities out at the pond?
Original.
So circa what?
So inception circa about?
Seventies, nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven?
Well, actually, the sewer system was installed in nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen sixty. I think they did do an upgrade out there in the mid-seventies, but none of the ponds have ever been dredged and cleaned. And that's rather apparently apparent right now because our system is designed to hold water from November till May out there at syrup pond. And that is a real life struggle right now, simply because we don't have the storage capacity. That's just one project dimension that's gonna need, need to be addressed.
I remember, uh, when I first came on the board, Greg Goss, the senate did do some type of an estimate out there and he, he thought it would be almost a million dollars to dredge them together.
And that was to dredge all three ponds. Of course, then you haven't, you haven't touched your sand filtration system. It's gonna. And that was to dredge all three ponds. Of course, then you haven't, you haven't touched your sand filtration system, it's gonna need definitely some upgrading, depending on what comes down the pike with EPA. Are they gonna allow us to stay that way? Are they gonna make us be a little fancier out there? A lot of things to think about.
One of the ideas to consider is, uh, in the event that a surcharge is elected to be put on, I would propose that we put any of those funded, funds into a new fund that's dedicated for water and sewer infrastructure projects. And that way, these expenditures can be tracked as you proposed. So if there's any uh, question from our residents of what that money's going towards, it'll be exclusively in a quote-unquote lockbox dedicated for projects such as the one that the Public Works Director has just mentioned.
So if we had it in a single fund for water and sewer, who would pay it? All the water customers and sewer customers?
However, the, the council chooses. I would propose putting both on there. Or make it four dollars per uh, per hookup.
Hookup for water or hookup for sewer?
Hookup for water. No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a wash for most customers. Because there're gonna be projects down the road that we can't, we can't just delay them, you know, the thing's sixty-plus years old, so.
Right.
These things happen, so, you know, I, I understand that raising rates is not, not fun, but in this situation, it's effectively gonna be a wash for the majority of our customers, so.
Joy Stan, do you guys have anything?
What are we down to? We're all in agreement that we want to have additional income today, but it's just helping it out for that rate. So you don't want the surcharges on there and then they raise the base rates?
Yep.
My stance on that.
To raise the rate?
Instead of having the surcharge.
Instead of surcharge?
In my opinion, the surcharge is something that, like fuel surcharge, fuels higher than Hades, they put on a fuel surcharge. When it went down, did it come off? Not really. And it made everyone mad. It's gonna make people mad regardless, and I just feel like the surcharges, to try and sneak it in before they get another bill, just so they don't notice. It's just the thing I hate that happens all the time, and I don't wanna be part of that. In my personal opinion.
So Joyce, do you have it? Press this one way or the other?
I mean, it all basically bounces up to be the same. Whatever.
Yeah, one way or another, whether it's an, an increase on the water bill, or there, there's still gonna be money coming in, one way or another. Just on how it's stated, how it's done.
If we raise the rates, will that money be set aside? Or is it just going to just go into the main arm fund?
And how do we designate that? One percent, two percent, or?
Or just keep us in the black like we have.
Right.
What do you gotta take either way?
I'm all, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanna know where the money's going, and where we can see where it's going. So, yeah, there's gonna be extra, however many dollars to it, and I think that's the way everybody will see is, you know where your money's going to.
I do kinda agree with the fact that with the surcharge not being directly delegated something at this point, there might be more backlash from that than just it didn't increase in rates.
And either way, it's not, I mean.
That's a good thing.
You're gonna see the four dollars come off of a, what, a bill or two now, maybe, maybe a bill. And then it'll come right back on either in the form of a surcharge or a little rate increase.
Look, the concern is how to keep track of it. The surcharge is easiest to track. It's a lot, it's a flat four dollars. And then the other, if you raise a rate, it gets lost, co-mingled in the, the usage and all of that.
I think if we're gonna raise it, we need to have a different account, in my opinion. Either way, you know where it's going, and where you're gonna spend it at.
A different account, or do we set aside, this is what we're gonna spend it on now?
However you wanna do it, as long as you got dollar amounts set aside for capital projects. You know, you get this much money every month, does it have to be set aside, or you're not using that? If you're gonna put that on there for that.
How hard would that be? Like, would you just add it, you wouldn't get a separate checking account?
No, you would, you would leave it in there. You would just have a separate line item under the sewer fund, or.
Sewer?
Yeah.
Stick to sewer now, cause that's what we're, that's the, that's the surcharge we're taking off. Before we start putting water surcharges on, let's focus on the, on the sewer again.
I mean, that's what I would say, just, it would just be an accounting line. So when you, when you get your financial statements, it would show that as part of the income, but it would be separated as a surcharge. And then you'd have a separate line item as, as it went out, and then those. For those expenditures, you'd have a separate line item for those, so then you could look back and say, this is what we had in, and this is what was.
Right, this is, this is how much, and then at any given time, this is how much we have for capital projects.
I understand. So otherwise, you're gonna be spending your money on something else, and you bring this money in, and it should've been for something, you know, one to be on.
Right.
Well, something come up, we need to spend it on here. No, you can't do that. Needs to be spent on this.
Is that different than our budgetary process then? We don't keep this on for anybody on different things? Are you wanting more than that?
No, I just, whatever we decide, you know. Capital projects, what we talked, just talked about.
I would say, uh, you know, that's, and I, I can work on that, preparing a formal resolution to be voted upon. With a couple whereas's is, is why we are doing it, what we plan to use the money for, and then uh, then getting a vote on, on putting that back on the sewer bill. I can, I'll try to have that ready by next, before your guys' committee meeting, at least, where you guys have several days to look over it.
Well, there's no reason to have a meeting, cause nothing's been referred to our committee.
True.
I, I would, Tim brought this up several times. He's obviously making a very strong argument, that he believes if you don't refer anything to committee, we shouldn't meet. I think that's absolutely wrong. The water committee has things that we should meet and go over together.
At all times.
Please provide guidance.
I would like you guys to meet to discuss capital projects.
And after that?
The next time, capital projects. I mean, that, that should be something, I don't know, are, are you? Is it more like what's written in the code, Tim? I mean.
There's nothing written in the code of what the committee should be or should not be working on, so. That's the confusion that I've always argued. Because otherwise, the whole council should be involved in it. Until the council makes a resolution to refer to give the committee the authority to do that, otherwise all council members should be involved. It's something that I did contact the Illinois Municipal League on, and they corroborated my answer. They indicated that that's the reason most committee meetings are canceled at a lot of municipalities, cause nothing is referred to, so. All it says in there, there shall be committees, it stops there. That, again, that's my interpretation. You know, a perfect example was the last committee meeting. There was only one item on the agenda, but yet in the recommendations, they talked about changing water rates. Well, heck, that wasn't even on the agenda to discuss. It's kinda confusing to me. And inconsistent with Open Meetings Act, so.
I disagree inconsistent with Open Meetings.
How are we, how are we out of compliance with the Open Meetings Act?
It wasn't even on the, what if somebody wanted to come to the meeting and contribute?
There was no decision made.
He said there was a recommendation that the water rates he looked at.
He said that we discussed it and what the committee members thought, and that's what we came and said. We didn't say the committee officially recommended this.
I remember him saying it was recommended. Well, show me a citation.
A citation?
Yeah.
What do you mean a citation?
The committee set some plans for future work. Some equipment was ordered for major sewer breakages. That is all that's in the minutes that was assessed the last council meeting, per the committee report, unless there's committee meeting minutes.
There's gonna be something to tell.
Okay, let's back off of that. I, I will write up a resolution to add a surcharge to the sewer bill. To be presented at the next meeting. Please add to the agenda, uh, resolution for sewer surcharge under miscellaneous business. Any other discussion on that? Any other business?
Yes, Matt. I got one item that I inadvertently omitted, and it was an item that I actually added to the agenda, so. That was uh, our city mowing contract that we do annually. I spoke with uh, Will Stewart, and he's interested in continuing to do that again this year. And I told him I would run it past you folks to make sure that was okay.
I'm okay with it. Uh, he seems to do a good job. Let's just make sure that we look at what he was paid last year and make sure that's not over ten thousand dollars.
Pretty confident it was under that.
I'm pretty sure it is due, but still just make sure.
Will Stewart. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was more like eight thousand and some change, if I remember correctly.
It's around six hundred dollars a month, just depending on the month.
That was the only thing I had.
If it's under that, I'm okay with it, unless, unless everyone thinks we should open it back up the bid. Uh, he does a good job. He was the most fairly priced when we put out the bids two years ago, so. Any other business? Any public comments on the non-agenda items?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Jordan?
Um, we're getting word from other municipalities that either the county or township is starting to put in place COVID-nineteen kind of preparedness plans, and so if you guys start hearing about kind of us, county level people starting to talk about sequestering people and having a plan in place, we don't have to do anything that we're, we're told yet, but um, if you guys start hearing that, you know, freak out. Um, hopefully, people in the county are gonna start giving us some more instruction if things do turn bad, so.
Any other public comments? Any need for executive session? I'll entertain motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second, Neville. If you have a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?